I'd like to open the March 4th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. At 7:30 PM, 2. Tonight, we have John Stokes, Chris Goodwin, myself, Jason Norman, Kathy Franson, and Rebecca Olden. And on the agenda tonight is the continuation of application 2019, as well as a new application 2020-1. We're going to start with the continuation of the application 2019-3, which will be quick because we're not going to discuss much on that front. First, application 2019-3 for Seville Street Groveland Realty and Trust LLC care of William Daley requests a comprehensive permit pursuant to provision MGL 40B 20-23 and 760 CMR 56 to construct 192 apartments, units in four residential buildings, a clubhouse with related amenities such as pool and associated accessways, sidewalks, parking, utilities, stormwater infrastructure located in the industrial district. Need to make a motion to reopen the hearing?
A second.
All those in favor?
Good evening. I'm Joel Kahn with Equity Alliance. I appreciate spending just a couple minutes with you tonight. We didn't really bring experts in, nor did we ask the town to bring experts in, but I figured it was important to come give you just an update to let you know the progress we're making because I don't want you to think that we stopped. Okay. First one is on legal front, the Nelson Street. Amy and Jay Talerman are continuing to have discussions. I would hope by next week that they will understand whatever legal they're going back and forth about to resolve and answer to your satisfaction, the question of concerns that may exist regarding Nelson Street. So that's, there was a plan being delivered today and other stuff associated with that. Regarding the civil engineering, with Rebecca attending, I was away on vacation. There was a meeting interim after our engineers had advanced it and Tech had gotten a chance to do their first round of peer review. And they got into a room, they talked about a lot of things. Subsequently to that, Millennium Engineering responded to Tech's latest peer review. There's been some additional questions that have been asked by Tech subsequent to that after they got the drainage reports to try to just help move things along a little bit. And again, this is not being done outside, it's being done with Rebecca. Millennium and Tech are trying to get to the point where the questions have been answered and asked and answered to the satisfaction of Tech. So when we come in front of you again, Tech can review maybe what the things were they went over, but that in fact, that that dialogue goes back and forth. Last I saw in our ongoing list of items, because they've just continued the numbers, they're up to 58. So that, you know, we don't want to come back in here and start with item number one, where are we? And hopefully the two of them can work through to that. We're expecting next meeting to be able to present and have the engineers come back in again and be able to discuss everything in its entirety. We have elevated the plans to what we could get into semantics, whether it's 85 or 90%. But we've elevated the plans very far advanced at this point in an effort to provide Tech all the information they were seeking to be able to understand how to draining systems and inverts and draining swells and all the other things that are important to you in your rendering, your decision. And finally, I've asked and had circulated a document for you that, again, it's not being asked to be reviewed tonight, but I wanted to just give you a progress report. This is the latest draft set of waivers that we will be seeking. That being said, Tech has been presented the same list, and as part of their review, they will be going through this and confirming up through their view that this is, it's correct. And so by the time we again come back, we hope to have Tech to comment, yeah, these are the waivers that are required based on zoning as well. So they will get a chance at it. But I did want to mark them draft for you and to give you some sort of sense of what are the waivers that we will be seeking. And we've spent a considerable amount of time now based on the plans being at this 85-90%. So now we know about things and where they are, reviewing both the zoning regulations, the subdivision regulations, the Board of Health regulations, and all applicable regulations pertaining to the 40B application that's in front of you. So that's all this was, was more informational to let you know that we have been typing away and trying to get ourselves organized. And we are expecting to come back, Rebecca, when?
So the next meeting would be technically for Wednesday, March 18. This room is currently booked by the planning board for a public hearing, so we would not be able to have it in this room. There's also another meeting in another room here in Town Hall, so I would have a tough time finding a location. I myself would not be present on the 18th because of the planning board meeting, as well as the engineers who are the peer review for that particular project. So it's up to the board as to whether or not I can try and figure out a location and also have somebody present from TEC that would not be present, or we could reschedule the meeting if the board would like to do so. And I also know that Amy Prusell with KP Law, the town counsel, she will also be unable to attend the meeting if it is moved to the 18th, but would have a better luck on a Tuesday or a Thursday if the board would be amenable to changing that, in as long as the application.
We obviously are glad to work with you and-
17 or 19?
That would be corrected that week, to keep it for the first and the third.
And our goal would be to resolve the legal question and to have Tech and our Millennium to present their reports to the board. That would be the only purpose of that particular hearing. We could then move to the following meeting then to finalize what the waivers are applicable. So.
Any thoughts on?
Yeah, the 19th is fine with me. I can't do this, I would keep, it's my kids' birthday.
Important date.
Patrick's day.
They think so, yeah.
I could probably do the 19th.
My kids.
Why if we have to ask?
19th works for me.
It'll work for me if you think we can get it-
And that works for us as well.
Everybody.
I believe that whether, they'll have to compare whether or not this room is available, because there are other rooms available on the 19th.
Tech and Millennium finalize their work. Maybe it'll be, you know, again, they'll review everything, but hopefully it'll make it a little bit easier.
Do we have any other questions or anything to bring up?
I'm good.
Do have just one comment on the weapon line, Ian Rad. Talked to DPD today. Went from the reviewer's office to his supervisor, and now it's with the regional, deputy regional declaration free for final approval that should be in the mail Monday. So I was hoping to have it for this meeting, we know I'm on them every week, so that, I don't know what it says, I don't, but the supersede or decision will be mailed Monday or later, as I said, Ian.
So you guys will get a copy of that to Rebecca?
Of course.
And she can distribute?
Of course.
Okay, great.
We'd like to fill her inbox up as best we can on a weekly basis.
Thank you.
All right.
So-
Motion to continue?
Motion to continue until March 19th at 7:30 PM. Room to be determined?
Yes.
That's my motion.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Thank you all, see you on the 19th.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we have the new application 2020-1, 301 Main Street. Mike Maroney requesting a special permit to utilize the site for a restaurant. The site is located in the business zoning districts. The proposed project is located at 301 Main Street Groveland. Assessors map 10 parcel 001 and owned by Zhong Yang, 110 Blue Jay Road, Linfield, Mass. 01940. All right. Come up and-
Tell us why you're part of-
Give us an overview. Start.
Good evening, Chairperson and member of the board. My name is Mike Maroney, I live in Haverhill. My daughter Nicole and I are here to request a special permit for a 68-seat quality restaurant at 301 Main Street. The restaurant hours will be Tuesday through Thursday from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from noon till 10:00 PM. Our hours don't really conflict with the surrounding businesses. We only have, and we only have 11 overlapping hours with the post office. We will be making substantial renovations to the existing building and extensive landscaping all around the building, making an attractive gateway for the Groveland Square. What is great about the site is that the town has exceptional sidewalk system from the public parking areas in the town that lead to the square, which has crosslights that lead to the front of 301 Main Street. The planning board gave us a site plan approval with three conditions. One, the fire department must approve the site, and the fire department has given their approval already. Number two, the US post office must approve the new parking improvements that we proposed, and we are still working with them. Number three, Mass, excuse me, Mass DOT must approve the new improved entranceway as proposed, and we're still waiting to hear from Mass DOT. I believe this is a great opportunity to make something of an old deteriorated building that would improve the square. And once we get, if we can get this board approval, we still must apply to receive conservation commission approval. I'm sure in the town, we have a sandwich shop that has 32 seats with three to four employees that have zero parking spaces, and the Groveland diner has 60 seats and seven employees, and they have zero parking places also. But our proposal that was approved by the planning board has eight spaces for our employees that will not infringe upon the shared public parking places in the town. Again, I think this is a great addition for the town, and I hope we can receive the required special permit for the quality restaurant. And I would expect if you were able to come up with a favorable outcome, that this board will impose the same two restrictions that the planning board had put on us. I say two, not three, because the Groveland Fire Department has already given their approval for the restaurant use. I'd like to thank the board for your time.
Thank you. Any questions or anything you want to start with in particular?
Nothing in particular jumps out. It seems like we have a little bit of public comments, so.
Yeah, but I want to make sure that we get our questions out first and get those addressed. So if you guys have questions, I think maybe we can do ours now.
Right. Would you be able to explain what is being proposed as far as the alterations to the curb cut that's been concerned on past plans?
Yes, please.
The actual curb cut is not going to be changed. It's going to stay as it is. But the opening from the sidewalk from the curb cut is going to be expanded because now the handicap ramp intrudes into what our new space as we proposed. So we're going to cut back and rebuild the handicap ramp for the post office, and that would give us a full access through the, into the parking lot. And that would give both, we would also have entranceway and exit at the same place, at the same time. Right now, it doesn't happen that way. And we'll also have signage up for the post office entrance and also a signage saying that there's no left turn coming out of the parking area.
Thank you. So I read the planning board's approval and their whole decision. So there were a lot of stipulations that they put in. One of them was that the applicant must make improvements, which I know we were just sort of discussing. So we've seen this property before. It's not new to us. So I think what Chris was alluding to is that in the past, the concerns were the curb cut and how people were going to get in and out, and how people were going to turn out of that parking lot, just so that it was safe because they were coming right out to a stop sign and didn't want to end up queuing parking inside the lot. We had multiple concerns, but it does look like that on this plan that a lot of the concerns that we brought up the first time were addressed. I do think it's going to be very difficult to have 68 seats, but I think if, I hope that you fill them all at once.
We do.
So, but I do believe that looking at the curb cut because of the removal of the handicap ramp, I think that will help, but I think, because that curb cut, if you guys recall, that curb cut was like, it was actually in front of the post office?
Right.
Which, that's where it started.
Right.
So it looks like if the improvements are made that way and the handicap ramp is addressed, and it looks like on the plan, now, I don't have my glasses on, so maybe you can, you're going to remove the handicap ramp and rebuild the ramp?
It's a problem.
Yeah, thank you. Bigger, thank you. So you're going to rebuild that concrete ramp, or are you?
Yes, it's going to be completely taken out, and we, the second page has the, has the design of the ramp.
So it moves the landing closer to the stairs?
I think that was the biggest issue.
The circulation as far as traffic going in and out. We made the parking for employees only so that the, there is no traffic going in, and once the employees get there, they're there for the evening. So that was how we figured there would be no traffic in and out, other than once they get there, then they leave at the end of the night, so.
And how are you going to make that clear to patrons who want to come? Let's say they're coming from out of town and they hear that you guys are fantastic, they want to come and try it. How do they know that that's only employees?
It'll be, it'll be well addressed on our website, and if somebody makes reservations, we'll be telling them that, so, and we'll direct them to where the public parking is.
Okay. Yeah, because that was the other thing I saw in the planning board decision, is that it's going to be reservations only?
Yeah, I mean, reservations only, but if, it's just to control the amount of people that can come to the place. So we don't have backed up, we're not using more than what we allotted for the, for the building. But if, say if it's a Wednesday and it's only half full, I'm sure, we're not going to turn people away if it's half full, but if it's, but we can control the restaurant by having, if we say 68 seats, that's how many people we're going to seat, we're not going to have 20 or 30 people waiting in line to get in the restaurant, because that's where the reservation comes in, so.
So I'm just trying to think it out with common sense, right? So if I, if I show up and I'm, my husband and I show up for number 69 and 70, right? What happens to us? Are we turned away? Are we told we can't wait? Are we, I'm just trying to get a sense of how it's going to work.
Well, the reason is there's not really any waiting area, so they'd be told there's a wait, waiting, but we will pursue the reservation only, because that's what we're going to pursue most on our website. So obviously, we're going to have people coming and going, and we can't fill it all the time, and that would be great if we could all the time, but we expect not to. On weekends, we'd probably end up being reservation only, so.
Yeah, because it, it did say that in your planning board decision that it would be reservation only.
Correct.
So I was curious as to how you were going to, how you were going to do that, because not all restaurants can do that. If you're really popular, it's nice, but, so I think I'm a little worried about that because of the wording of the decision. I just want to grab this. Says the restaurant, now this is a special condition, the restaurant use will be by reservation only. Any change in operation shall require the applicant to reappear before the planning board. So I think that's where I'm a little concerned, because, okay, so on a Wednesday night, let's say you're only half full, is that not reservation?
Well, see, the whole idea of the reservation is to control the parking.
Right.
Not the, not really the restaurant, but-
Right.
So we don't have backup in the restaurant, and we also don't take over more of the anticipated parking that was proposed by the, to the planning board.
Right.
I think the biggest issue is how is reservation only going to be enforced? Because if it's stipulated in here, then that's the rules we have to follow, and so what happens when somebody else shows up and they don't have a reservation?
And there's no place to go up to say, seat?
No, period. I mean, this technically says reservation only.
Yeah, that's what I-
Now theoretically, they could make a reservation when they walk up to the desk, I guess, but-
Right.
The letter, the way it's written explicitly says reservation only. So the enforcement of that has to follow what it's written.
Right.
There's no, hey, well, you know, we didn't, we had some extra seats, so we let them in.
Right.
So it's just, the way they worded that makes it hard to actually enforce is my concern. I don't-
Yeah, I think it really is more so for us, it's, you know, when we say reservation only is because we, that's how we anticipate it's going to work, because it is a small place and because there is limited parking, you know, so it has to find its way to do that, so.
Well, when I read that, I just thought there was some special system you were going to use just for that, you know, because I'm sure they didn't make that up, I'm sure there was some discussion about this in planning. Am I right?
That is correct.
Planner, yes. So do you, do you recall what, as part of that process, is that what they were saying, is that they only wanted reservations? Or more of what he's describing?
As with Mr. Maroney and as he's describing, the intent behind the condition and the discussion of such was to, again, alleviate the parking concerns and the vehicle traffic circulation into and out of the site. One of the board members, I'm paraphrasing, but specifically mentioned exactly what you had just called out, that, okay, so there's nobody, there's, you know, only five people there, they come up, I don't have a reservation, and then, okay, so then I just make a reservation. So it would kind of along the lines of what Mr. Maroney is saying, is that as long as there's not long lines of waiting and there's not traffic jams of people trying to get to the parking spaces and waiting outside and causing a nuisance, then it would in fact be reservation only because they would be able to sit down.
Okay. That makes more sense. I figured there was more elaborate discussion about that and why that was there specifically stated that way. Okay. Thank you. You guys have any other questions?
They had a question regarding, you said the parking for the restaurant is employees only, but it's public parking for the post office, so I think that's another thing that's going to be confusing.
Okay, what we did for the planning board is, there's only 11 overlapping hours, because Sunday they're closed, Saturday they, they close at noon time, Monday we're closed, so there's only, the only overlapping is two hours on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and four hours, if I did my math right, on Friday. But our first, first shift of, of employees will be parking at the old, where the electric company is, the parking lot, I guess they have some busters up there, but that's where we're going to park employees on the first shift until the post office closes. The signage for the post office on all of the things will be for post office employees and patrons. That's what the signage is going to say. So all the, all the spaces that are shown on the plan will be for post office employees and, and post office patrons.
What time would your first shift begin?
First shift on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday is 3 o'clock, so there's a two-hour overlap.
So if you, but if you open at 3, I'm assuming you have people that come in prior to prep?
Yeah, that's why our first shift is going to, our first shift on, on, those days will be up at the, I'm not sure what that street is, if it's School Street or not.
School Street.
School Street, then that's where they'll be parking.
And so you receive permission to have them park there?
That's public parking.
It is in that electric company?
Yeah.
It is? Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Great.
Yeah.
Good to know. Okay. That helps.
One other concern that, you know, has been brought up is the way the sites are set up, it seems like there should be more parking behind, and then there's that access to the adjoining driveway. Have you thought of any ways to mitigate people driving through and cutting over and parking in areas they're not supposed to? You know, it's just been a concern that's been brought up previously-
Yeah, Mr. Conal has put up a sign, and then he put up Jersey barriers, which are on his property, and that prevents anybody from circulating around. And also, I had suggested that, you know, his, his worry was that my, our patrons would be parking in his parking lot. So I suggested he put the Jersey barriers once we open and, and put signage up, and that's why we're going to put signage up on the other driveway so that it will say post office entrance. So circulation as far as going around is, is, is not, is kind of null and void at this point.
Yeah. So I also know there's town land back there that probably could be used for parking, so.
The one thing I-
Basically what it's used for now, but it's not, I don't think it's officially parking land. I don't really know how the town wants to handle that, but-
Yeah, the one thing I also forgot to mention was that in the planning board stage, we actually provided a easement from the street to the, to the riverfront, called the town.
And you haven't gone in front of conservation yet?
Uh, no.
Okay. Do you have a, are you on their agenda? Have you applied yet?
Doing these steps.
No, that's good. That's why I'm asking, because sometimes when you try to jump ahead, sometimes it gets into a little bit of trouble. Okay. Because I think that's going to be a big, I mean, I think it'd be great to be able to sit and eat dinner and look at the river, but whether conservation agrees or not is going to be another story, but. I may have other questions as public comment. You guys have any other specific questions?
I mean, are there any thoughts of outdoor space or any necessarily seating, but just-
That was part of the approval, and that's why most, why we're going to conservation. And that's also why we're going to landscape the entire site.
Yeah, because if I correctly, conservation has a lot to say about even outside renovations to that property and everything.
Correct, yes. Yeah, we're within the 200-foot setback, so.
Right. So, and are you proposing any exterior changes to the building itself? Not necessarily landscaping, not necessarily parking?
I have a rendering, I thought maybe you had it, but I guess, I apologize.
No, I do.
It was part of what we had last time, I think? Thank you.
The posts are staying out front, right?
Yes, they're not shown in the picture, but yeah.
Okay, they are staying? Okay.
Yeah, but we're going to do something more to it than what just posed, so.
Yeah, because I know they were on the plan but not on the rendering, but I figured that was for-
Visual.
I'm pretty sure that one's just not going to stay without the posts, so.
Guy works-
I asked the question for a reason.
Yeah.
Most of the time I know the answer, I just asked it. So in all that, we'll have to go in front of conservation anyway.
Correct.
Yeah. So would this be part of your 68 seats, the patio area?
No. What we talked about in planning was, if you'd like to go to Michael's Harbor side, you know, in the nice weather, inside the restaurant's empty, everybody's on the outside, and that's just what happens. And locally around here, if you're going to Haverhill, Haverhill restaurants kind of hurt during the summer months because they don't really have outside seating. So this is an advantage that we're looking for as cruise of the river, that's why we like the site, is that we would be able to be busy during the summer months as well. That's why we like the site, is that we would be able to be busy during the summer months as well.
Well, I think one of the, because that's why I asked this question, because if you do have 68 seats inside and now you have another, it looks like 24 out here, that's more than 68.
Correct.
So I'm just, so now are you going to push your limit? And are you regulated by anybody else who might say that you can't have more than 68 seats?
Well, the fire department would regulate the inside of the building, but not the outside of the sitting, outside seating area. But we'd be, we're going to be restricted by, it's not a very big area back there. So we're really going...
There's also capacity issues that the building, the partner wouldn't force as well.
Correct.
I knew that. Okay.
So most of the parking is going to be across the street and the other one down on, by the electric company? Is that what we're figuring?
There's also parking, there's public parking on Elm Park.
Yeah.
Not the ones across from the thing, but up the side of the street.
On the side.
That's correct.
What about the parking, you know where, along the river on the opposite side of the intersection where Stark and Cronk is? Is that private?
The one on the street, those three parking spaces in front of the building are public, but all of the spaces that are in the other lot adjacent, right up against the river, those are all privately owned.
Okay, that's, I knew that was sort of a mix, because I think a lot of people were parking there to go to Groveland Diner. That's why I was trying to...
Right.
And then whoever owns the, owns the building like Groveland Diner, was there, so that would make sense.
Because it's not, seat-wise, it wouldn't be all that different from Groveland Diner, but...
Yeah, as far as Groveland Diner, and that's where at opposite hours, if Groveland Diner reopened, we're really, we're opening at three.
Right.
Except for, except for Saturday and Sunday, we're open at noon, which is really at the tail end of if it's a breakfast place again, so.
Right. Except noon on Saturday and Sunday.
Correct.
Yeah.
And Friday.
On Friday. I'm just saying it's Saturday, Sunday is a popular time for breakfast. People going over, you know?
Right.
If they were to reopen, but... Any other questions down here?
No, I think for me, just pending anything that arrives through public comment, but...
Yeah, that's what I like to hear public comments for.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up to any public comments. Please come up to the podium and if you have anything in particular to address, I'll run up at once.
Sure, all you guys are sick of me already anyhow, but my name's Brian Cornell. I'm representing Groveland Square LLC, which is the adjacent property. We were back here, I think it was in April or May, when a decision with a similar concept of reconstituting the gas station for another business. And today, at the time, it was for a small retail. It could have been a boat showroom, or I think there was a home improvement. It takes a while, there was a lot of iterations before that was withdrawn for the current applicant, but at the time, the ZBA had declined it, I think, after getting a good sense of what the property looked like, even after a site plan would be approved. Well, since then, the planning board approved that site plan with, I think, even a few less parking spots than was originally in front of you at the time, but with the same ingress egress. So that plan that you had before you has less spots, but it's effectively the same ingress egress using the same curb cut with that same kind of cut-across-the-lawn approach. I think the differences between when this was presented to you before, back in the spring, is they've carved off about a foot of the post office's handicap ramp, and they also moved the handicap spot from being next to the handicap ramp over in front of what was the Getty Station, what would be the restaurant. So now those people that are using that same handicap ramp that's going to move now have to traverse two lanes of traffic to get to it, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So I'm taking the approach of just letting you know that, you know, we're not in support of putting a restaurant. We're really not in support of really putting too much pressure onto that site that already exists today, other than that what's there is the post office. And there's a few reasons for that. Going back to kind of the bylaws of the Groveland Planning and ZBA, it's about safety, public betterment, all of those things. Getting a restaurant into the square, absolutely, would love it. I work in the square. I'd love to be able to walk across the street, although I doubt I'd be welcome at this establishment at this point. But from a standpoint of having a restaurant in the square, I think that'd be great if it could be sustained. I don't believe that can be sustained. And from a reservations only, a lot of the different caveats that went into that planning board decision, I don't know who's going to enforce any of this. I think you just cited that within it. If you change from reservations only strictly to someone showing up or people queuing or people parking around the square or wherever they're going to be and then getting to the restaurant, how's that enforced? I don't know who would enforce it. I know that there is kind of a zoning enforcement person, which I think is also the building inspector. That's a lot to put on someone. I don't know how that happens. From a standpoint of the parking that was approved, which I guess isn't in the purview of you right now, that was approved by the planning board, but the safety and betterment of that area is 100% your jurisdiction. And one of the things that I did want to note is that the TEC review, the peer review of that plan cited, even though it was ignored in the approval, said that for the required parking for 68 seats would be roughly 92% of all of the parking within the 500-square-foot area. And that's what the rule is, right? So they approved it, but knowing that a lot of the local businesses are in dire need of parking, to say that, okay, the town's going to approve 90% of all of that. If that's what you need, you can have it. That seemed kind of extraordinary to me. And I think if this additional 24 seats outside does get approved, and again, who's going to enforce it? But if that does happen, based on that calculation, that's nine more. That puts you of all parking for that approval that was rendered by the planning board. Again, the only way that this moves forward is that you guys approve it and that the Department of Transportation approves it and that the post office, which quite frankly has the most to lose, also approves it. Few other things just on overlapping hours. You know, if the first shift, I don't know if the first shift, I guess you open your doors at three, your first shift probably starts at one, I would guess, if you're doing prep and everything else at a restaurant. But if there's not going to be any parking on site, how's that get enforced again? The handicap spot again, safety. And then I guess just on all of that alone, I would just let you know that we did close as the applicant had requested, said, yeah, you should close it, you shouldn't have to police it. We've gone through a bunch of trolling on Facebook and a number of, even though it's our right to close our driveway off, to have all of this traffic that's been going through here. We closed it off, so we've had a lot of people say, "You're awful, you're the Scrooge. How could you do this? How could you do that?" I'm okay with that. I've got a thick skin. But as part of after doing that, the applicant and the owner has taken Groveland Square to Lawrence Superior Court to try to take access to our driveway. And I just want to leave you with something, because this is on the record in the transcript at the Lawrence Superior Court, that the owner has said. So when asked about cars going in and out of that same curb cut, which isn't changing, even though it might be modified to have lines and an angle, we can't use it. It's way too dangerous. The driveway is too narrow. We are risking people's lives. Lives are in danger. And this is from the owner of the property, not us, complaining to on record the Lawrence Superior Court. So I guess I would just let you know that, that's our position. We don't think it's going to be a betterment. I think it is going to be a problem. I think the parking's going to be a very large issue. Citing what used to be with the Groveland Diner, which closed. And when it was successful, it actually had an agreement for parking elsewhere that it paid for. And it also had much more parking. This whole area was a single lane in and single lane out. There was parking on both sides of the street. Right in front of our building, in front of the post office, across the street from the post office, in front of the restaurant nearby, there was way more public parking. And we're talking about, all of that has gone away and we're still going to bear the burden of all of this. So I just, I heed caution on the decision, and I'm just letting you know, that's our position, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one quick question for you.
Of course.
So the applicant alluded that you were interested in putting in jersey barriers. Have you done that or are you going to do that?
I have.
You've done it already?
Yeah.
Okay, because I didn't drive down there, down all the way to the end today, so.
We put up proper signage, we closed off the back of, you know, on our property, well within our property as well. So there are still people parking at the post office on the other side. But back to signage too, you know, that signage, people are going to heed this, you know? I've had a sign up there for months. Everyone drives into our driveway anyhow. And then they go down and they see that, they turn around, they drive back out, but, you know, I guess when it comes to enforcement, we're a small town. We don't have a lot of, you know, if it's downtown Boston, the, you know, BTD is on every corner, ready with their orange book, and they're out there. That's not happening around here. So having a sign up is not a deterrent to people pulling in and out of that parking lot. And I do know that it has been tough, you know? It's been very tough on the post office, but, you know, we don't own the post office. We're protecting our own land, we're protecting our own liability, our own customers, and for our own people walking in and out of our business, so.
Right, because I remember that was a big concern of yours, is that people would park on your property to go to the post office or to go over to the other, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And all of this has happened since the land-taking. There was an 80-plus-foot wide-open curb that you could pull in before. When the state bought that and turned this into a two-lane, both-ways driveway or a two-lane, both-ways street intersection, it completely changed the whole downtown. Completely changed it. So I get the challenges, I just don't feel that the challenges are worth it. It's always entirely up to someone else what they want to try to invest in, what they want to do with their property. I'm just saying if we're the ones that are bearing the burden of it, it's not quite fair, so.
One thing I do want to, if I recall correctly, we never actually made a decision on that. It was actually withdrawn, I believe.
The application for, before the planning board was withdrawn, the application for the zoning board of appeals was denied based upon the fact that the applicant had not clearly stated what it was in fact that they were requesting or asking for.
Well, and I think the idea was to have it go back to planning because we cannot grant parking variances, we can't, you know, we can look at the overall site, but we don't do site plan review in zoning. So that's all done in planning and they work out all the, so, but they, I think at the time, the applicant was asking us to do that, which we really couldn't do that. So we asked them to go to planning, which they spent, I don't know, a fair amount of time in planning, going through this whole plan with them and working out whatever with the planning board, because I didn't see the meetings, but I'm assuming based on their decision, it did look like they had addressed a lot of the concerns that we had, we had brought up in our meeting. So that's sort of a little...
There was a little back and forth, and it wasn't very clear what the plan was.
We asked them to go to planning because they really, that's what they needed first, and then come here. Now, the only reason that I can see that they're here is because restaurants are not explicitly, explicitly allowed in downtown area. So really only in front of us at this point is whether a restaurant can go in that location. As far as parking and everything and all of that, it's all been addressed by planning.
Correct.
So they're here for a special permit for a restaurant in a business district. That's what we're looking at at this point. What we were looking at before was a little bit different, but now that it's all been approved by planning, that changes our whole perspective.
Could I rebut on a couple of things that were said?
Of course.
First of all, Mr. Cornell would be more than welcome at our restaurant. Number two, I'm not involved in any civil matter between Mr. Cornell and the landowner. I'm not part of that at all. And one other thing, the, two other things, but we did spend an awful lot of time, a lot of meetings with the planning board, like you said, to get to this point and to get to a point where we could come here. The, but also the existing entrance is not constructed as proposed to make it a safe entrance, as it is now. We're not just moving the ramp one foot, but we're moving it over four feet so that we can get the line of traffic moving correctly. So I had suggested to Mr. Cornell to put up jersey barriers, but I didn't mean to put them up now. I meant to put them up after we got our approval so that he, and so that my patrons would not be parking in his property. So it was never my intention for him to go ahead and put it up now, but I mean, that's his property, his right to do that, so. But it wasn't, it wasn't until, it was meant to be after I got approved, so, thank you.
Was there, did you have a comment?
I do. I really don't know if I'm supposed to make a comment at this point. Because you said you're voting on the building itself.
Well, you can still make a comment.
So please state your name and address first before we...
I'm Michelle Leighton.
Thank you.
I own a restaurant here in town for the past 14 years. We deal with just the public parking out in front of the building now that...
Speak up just a little?
We deal with the limited parking that there is now for public parking in front of my restaurant now, which we share with the Groveland Diner, with the Laundromat, who has become quite busy over there. And, you know, I constantly at this point, without anyone even there, when the customers are coming in, they're constantly complaining, especially like on Fridays and Saturdays, that they can't even park out front, that they had to park way down the road or something just to come and pick up something. So I don't know, I wasn't part of the meeting, I wasn't aware of the planning board meeting or anything like that. I was just made aware of this because somebody dropped off something, you know, letting us know that this was actually taking place. My concern is they're going to have parking for 68 plus 24, and I know you have designated areas, but I think basically they're all going to be parking right across in that public parking. So what happens to the other people that are in there? If they have, they say reservation... If they have, they say reservation only, but when people are coming to the door, they're not gonna turn them away if they have open seats. So where are all these cars gonna be parking? I don't think they're gonna be walking all the way down to the electric company, so they're gonna be walking back. The first thing they're gonna do is they're gonna take over the square. And then where do our customers go? What do we tell them? That's our concern, which is basically for the parking.
Mitchell Croner, Three Cannon Hill Road Extension. I am a real estate attorney, I'm not representing anyone tonight, and just here, I guess as an interested citizen, I guess maybe representing common sense. I'd love to have a restaurant, I'd love these people to open a restaurant somewhere else. I think it's been before this board for a boat showroom, you know, other things that you questioned, and I would submit that under the special permit rules, you can still revisit parking. All the planning board did was say that they could have off-site parking. I think Rebecca did an excellent job drawing the decision. I think it was a terrible decision by the planning board, frankly, when the towns... Have you had copies of the expert for the planning board? Have you gotten copies of all that? Rebecca, have they gotten copies of the reports?
They did originally for the original application, and then again, as part of the submittal package that I provided to them, and the submittal package from Mr. Maroney, the last review was incorporated as part of the package, so they had the last comment letter, which should have a detailed list of the first comment to the last comment being addressed.
So that had the one with the ninety-one percent parking?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So if you look at, I mean, the planning, if you go through the planning board decision, I don't want to take your time doing that, it just really doesn't make sense. I mean, the way they say that the parking basically would not be an issue, the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh the beneficial impacts to the town, you just heard the woman from the sandwich shop say that she's gonna lose her parking, "I'm a customer of the sandwich shop, I'm a customer of the post office." The night the planning board voted, a new business opened, Hart and Stone, I don't know if anyone is here from them, where the mortgage company used to be, they're open to eight o'clock at night. So basically, the businesses in that block, where your place and ours, they're sacrificing their spaces for this restaurant. So I submit, you can revisit, under your general powers, to, for special permits, page one oh four of the bylaw, special permits, social, economic, community needs, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, neighborhood character, consistency with the Towne of Groveland master plan. I'd love to see what the downtown master plan looks like if this restaurant goes in, but I think this board really needs to take a hard look at everything. And also keep in mind, I'm sure it's been brought to your attention, the prior owner received over six hundred thousand dollars from the state when the bridge went in, basically stating that the property had no value. And I'll conclude just by giving you, I think you've probably seen this letter from DOT, and they assumed the post office was going to be closed. And I guess I'm, I understand the applicant wants to proceed, but it would seem it's a little premature to hear from the state whether they're gonna allow the access. So I guess it's up to the board whether you think this is a good thing. I mean, we'd all love a restaurant, no question. Like I said, if it was somewhere else, I'd love to go. I'd love to see how these people do with a restaurant, I'm always up for trying new restaurants. It just seems where you've turned down a boat showroom, whether the planning board made their decision or not, I think you can reach the conclusion, it was a poor decision. Thank you.
One quick question, the answer is the DOT will not actually give a formal approval without the town approval.
I have a question. On all the other applications we do, we're the last approval that's needed. It seems like we're one of the first on these. And I don't know if they need to go, I mean, normally, in things I've had to do, I had to go through every other board in town before I came to the ZBA, including Concom.
But the improvements that are being suggested for the conservation commission are only for the exterior of a building that's not going to be removed per se. So I think based upon what Mr. Maroney was stating, is that if he doesn't have the support of the zoning board of appeals to go through the conservation commission to do any exterior work, wouldn't necessarily be economically feasible for him?
That's what I'm saying about, with the patio and everything else, with the seating outside, I don't know if he needs to get that, he can't, can't he get that before he comes here, so we know what we're talking about? We seem to have the cart before the horse, is all I'm saying.
It's entirely up to the zoning board of appeals, I think it would be bold and hollow.
You know, that way he'd know if it was economically feasible. If he needs that outside seating for the summertime and, you know, the warm weather months, and they won't give it to him, I would imagine that might have some impact on whether or not he does business there.
But you could say the same as if he doesn't get an approval from, for a restaurant, you think conservation's gonna be like, "Well, why are you before us?"
Well...
If the use is not allowed, then why are you before a board at all, really? I mean, you could make that argument, but...
No, I understand, I'm just saying that it just seems that's what's going on. We're approving stuff before all the other boards are approving theirs.
So the applicant was gonna come before the zoning board of appeals first for the use permit, the zoning board of appeals asked him to go to the planning board first, in terms of the site and the parking. Once those issues, and he has received approval, he's now before the zoning board of appeals for the use permit. If the use is allowed, then he will proceed with the conservation commission, if the use is not allowed, then he will not proceed with the conservation commission, and the application will stop.
Can I just, real quick, I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Croner said, that part of what's before you, this is an appeal, right? It's the zoning board of appeals, it's in order to go for something that you require special approval, right? It's not zoned in business district, business district B within Grove, right? So as part of the special permit, or the ability to grant this variance, part of, and it is, it's on page one oh five or one oh four, is that this is providing social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal, which is in front of you right now. But one of the most important parts, and I feel like this is what got maybe glossed over with the fact that they're saying, the planning board in their jurisdiction has the right to give a special reduction in parking. That's what they did. And they also approved a site plan. That's all they did, they did those two things. And then they kicked the can down the road to the ZBA, the conservation commission, the Department of Transportation, the fire department, the post office, and consequently to the public, some of which weren't notified of this, because the abutters notices go to the owners of the buildings, not to the businesses that house within them. So the businesses themselves, if the owner of the building doesn't notify them, like Groveland Square LLC notified Norwood Insurance, we wouldn't know about it. This would just go past. So, but as part of that, as part of your responsibility within the bylaws, it is to consider that this social, economic, community needs which are served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, that's what we're talking about right now. We're talking about ninety-two percent of all parking, which is already tight in downtown since the bridge went in, and since they changed the whole complexity of that traffic area. Those parking spots went away forever. There is no specific parking area for this restaurant. It's a five-hundred-square-foot radius, and within those spots, the T E C said, "You're claiming at what you're supposed to approve ninety-two percent of them," today. So now, forget everybody else. That means everyone else gets eight percent when this restaurant's at capacity, everybody else, every other business, the hair salon, the other restaurant, the laundromat, Stark and Kronk, Norwood Insurance, the tenants that actually just moved out of two ninety-one because parking issues for their clients. It's already an issue. But on top of that, you're talking about traffic flow in and out of this site, and whether or not you've dressed it up and improved it to mark lanes, or to even cut back a few feet. I see it every day, so maybe I'm too close to it, but you guys saw it, you went down there, you walked it, you looked at it. It doesn't improve with age, and it's certainly not gonna improve with an additional business, with loading and unloading, and employees going in and out, and what happens in a snowstorm. I found that out very quickly when I closed the driveway the first time, and there was no place to park for anybody. It was a disaster, because there's no on-street parking around there. So once that gets tighter by a snowstorm, and now granted, you know, that could be three weeks out of the year, it could be three months out of the year, but it's a problem. So I just wanted to say that, yes, your decision in front of you right now is, do I say, "A restaurant's a good idea," but it's with the confines of all of these other attributes as to what you're approving as part of putting a restaurant in there. I just wanted to be clear on that, because I feel like it seems to me that it's kind of shifted from one committee to another committee, and they approved it, so now I need to approve it, should we move it back to the other? I just...
What I was trying to do was to make it clear, because the last time this was here, it was very muddy, as to whose line was this and that. So I was just trying to clarify that they, that there were hearings about this in planning for many, many months, where everyone had an opportunity to come out and persuade the planning board to choose one way or the other, right? They had many meetings, I'm assuming, right Rebecca?
They did.
So plenty of opportunity for people to come in, because we weren't the right venue for that. When people were here the first time, we were like, "That's really not our, we're not parking and site plan specialists." That's mostly the planning department, that's what they do, and that's their thing. So that was why it went to planning, because that's their expertise, that's where, you know, they have the public hearings for this type of thing. So I was just more saying, it's not the same as it was the last time, it's, what we have here is a little different than what we reviewed the first time. That's all I was trying to clarify.
A hundred percent.
I didn't want to rehash the whole thing, because it was already gone to planning, and they've settled a lot of the issues that we had the first time, that's all, I was just sort of saying...
I don't know that they settled, they made a decision on it.
They made a decision.
But I don't think they settled the safety issue, I don't think they settled any of those other things, which you also take into account as part of whether or not, what type of restaurant, or what type of business, or what type of entity goes into the space.
I don't disagree with you, I was just trying to say to them, it's a little bit different than the first go-around, because we tried to help the first time.
Totally, one hundred percent, I a hundred percent get it, I was at the meetings, I...
And did you go to all the planning meetings and state your concerns at all of those planning meetings?
Yes, I did, to everyone I could attend, yeah.
Okay, so you did, you attended.
I personally, as the direct abuter, but I don't believe, again, that many of these other businesses, and I don't want to speak for them on the record, but I know that the hair salon was against this, and they said it was a travesty, but they didn't know about it, because their landlord never told them, the new business that's in there. So I just wanted to let you know that it's not just, "Is a restaurant okay? Don't worry, the parking's fine, the safety's fine, the ingress egress is fine." You need to determine whether or not that's gonna be good for the community down there, regardless, you know, safety-wise, everything, people coming and going at, you know, several hours into the night, so on and so forth.
Which is why we brought this up the first go-around.
Absolutely.
Right?
I'm with you, I'm with you. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Greg Stark, Stark and Kronk, three oh eight Main Street, three oh six Main Street. I'd just like to say I'm concerned about the parking as well. I went to many, probably eighty percent of those other meetings as well, spoke about what I, you know, could see and experience in the square. I don't think we got the result from the other boards that we would have expected, some, a little bit more concerned about this stuff. I just wanted to explain that, you know, the building that I own in the square, which is roughly twelve or thirteen thousand square feet, and has seven parking spaces that I own, seven, and then has three parking spaces on the street, and then the rest is an alleyway and my driveway, which, when the restaurant was there, you know, patrons would take over and park wherever they could, they would park in my driveway, they park any place that they can. So I am concerned about parking. You know, it is very limited in the square. The restaurant did have arrangements with other areas in the square with other people, and they'd paid people so that they could park in other parking lots during the off times, that I don't see happening going forward with any other restaurant. It's just a concern, if all of a sudden we're gonna have this many parking places, the people, they don't care where they're gonna park. They're gonna find any open spot, and it will become a problem, and I concur with what you're saying about, there's nobody here to monitor it, or to, you know, what happens after? If we start having a problem, what do we do? Is it...
There is a process for that. So if there were, let's say, you would make a complaint to the zoning enforcement officer, who in this case is also the building inspector, and he would then go back to the planning board decision, and whatever decision we make, and whatever decision conservation makes, and then enforce based on that information. So that would be the avenue for a complaint or anything like that.
So a complaint is a complaint.
And then it also says in the planning board decision, that it says that if there are issues that, I can't remember exactly which section, but I did read it, that they would have to come back if their use changed, or if it became an issue, they'd have to come back after a year. Did I read that right?
It becomes a major problem, though, after they've invested all kinds of money into this, into their restaurant, and, you know, there's gonna be, I mean, there's, they're upset, you said it was okay, and I just think the boards have to take a little bit stronger stance at trying to understand these things, and not just either passing the buck, or, you know, you have to take a really hard look at this thing before you make a decision. You know, it's important, this is our square, it's the only one we got. So, you know, don't just pass it to the next board, you know, take a look at it hard and make a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Want to speak? You came back, did you want to speak on this?
I want to hear more about it. Can I speak as an autobot?
Sure, absolutely.
You're public. You live in town, right?
Yeah, I live in town.
You know the drill.
Please, sir.
Bill Daley, Seven Hemlock. I've saw the meetings, I don't, gas station's been sitting down there empty forever. I don't think it's anyone's decision if the guy's going to be successful, not down there, it's not anyone's choice, right? I mean, if he can, if he wants to put a restaurant down, I think it's better than nothing, better than what it looks like. That property did suffer when the square was redone, so I liked it. I used to go to the diner all the time, I miss it. I miss it a lot. And parking, I mean, it's, I, I don't know, I don't, that's something the boards have worked out, but I, I, I think the town needs something. There's nowhere to, nowhere to eat anymore and that's all, I just, I'm falling, but I, I get it, it could be safe. I'm not down there all the time, I'm not next door like insurance or across the street, but, no, no one has parking, so, I mean, maybe valets an issue, you know, there's, you know, there's an option, there's a big parking lot up the street. I mean, it's just, people will figure it out. If there's no parking, they'll figure it out. They'll walk from the pines, whatever, but I, I think the town, you know, I'm trying to do stuff up in the industrial, right? It's just, it's so hard with, with the boards and, you know, industrial just didn't work by the, at, at the end of the day, when you, when you start plotting buildings on there and, and the zoning and the setbacks and the utilities and it's so hard, but the town needs something. I mean, my tax has doubled in the past ten years and, you know, the street sweep and the trash come half, half as much. So, you know, I, I think it's time that, that the town, you know, I, I know it's, I know the commercial base isn't going to build up overnight. I think residential does need to be there first and the commercial will follow and it, it, that's called growth and that's, that's what happens. And I don't, I don't, if the guy wants to put whatever he wants in there, I don't think it's, the uses, if it's allowed or, or not, I, I don't know, but I don't think if it's successful, if he fails or whatever should, should matter. I don't, no matter what he does or no matter where anyone does, if they want to build a house somewhere, it doesn't matter what color the guy wants to paint it. I just, I think the town needs it and I think it looked like a good project too. It looked, you know, I like it with the patio out back and the river right there. It should be utilized. A parking lot, that was the last plan I, I think the town was looking at purchasing. We can't buy any more land. I mean, I just, we're still paying for it. We have a new school coming down the pike and we start making right decisions. That's all, I just, it's, you know, to buy that land for a parking lot, I know it's hard getting in and out, but if you put, I mean, the town wanted to buy it with their own money, put three times as many spaces in there. So, for who? For other businesses that are down there? I mean, I, you know, that's, it's good for them, I guess. But it's someone, someone's property. It's someone's property is the bottom line. And if, if he can do it, I, I think, let him do it, you know? If it's within the rules, that's all, if it's within the rules, he should be given the opportunity, you know? That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, my name is Zhong Ya. I'm the owner of three oh one Main Street and I just want to talk to the town people. I mean, since I bought this property and try work with all the brother to make the best for the everybody and also for the town. And I have to try to reach them, I mean, try and negotiate some kind of plan so we can good for everybody, good for them, good for us, good for the town, but they refuse it. If they truly concerned about the community, they will not block it. They will not put the burden on the post office, they will not put the burden on the, on the Grove Land, that means residential and all the people use the post office. If they truly, truly, they love the community, they want to make it better, they will never do this.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I had to address that. We, we have been exceptional community citizens since that bridge was put in there. Exceptional. We have provided our care in keeping up our property, something that isn't duplicated next door. We shut down our property to protect ourselves, to protect our customers, to protect our liability, to protect our business and to protect our family. From a standpoint of safety, which I spent countless hours researching, coming to the boards, explaining to them, you guys yourselves went down and did a site review. Did it work? Did the property work? The planning board, they went down, they walked through the property. There were almost three accidents within the property without another entity in the gas station. And from a standpoint of whether or not this is allowed, the simple fact is this, it is not allowed. It's not a use, it wasn't allowed, that's why they're here today. The amount of parking that was required for this restaurant was not allowed. The variances within the setbacks were not allowed. The planning board made an extraordinary exception in allowing this. Who has paid the burden the entire time? Groveland Square LLC and our property. We were not afforded six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of our collective tax dollars which the prior owner was paid. And as far as the gentleman who just spoke, who's the owner, he came in, purchased the property, as he has every right to do, for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which has basically done nothing for the post office but look to reconstitute the Getty Gas Station. The post office should be alarmed. They have borne the brunt of all of the actions of its current owner and landlord. We have done nothing but protect ourselves after taking extraordinary measures to allow people to provide access to and from. Not for twenty-plus years, not for a prescriptive easement, not for any other reason than we're good community citizens. My father-in-law, God rest his soul, moved the business to his hometown of Groveland sixty-five years ago and we've been in that building since. So how dare you, how dare you to bring that up to us? We've done everything we can, I've dedicated my time to this community to come and speak to you good people and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
I just was going to rebut Mr., Mr. Daley. I think you've seen this decision, but this is the take, just going to record, the six hundred thousand dollar taking. People seem to feel sorry for the new owner. I mean, when he bought this, he knew that the prior owner had been compensated for the loss of that use. The prior letter I gave you indicated that the state thought the post office was going to close, that the whole thing was just temporary. So, I mean, the prior owner got a million dollars for that property and now the current owner wants to try to put a restaurant on there. In terms of the planning board decision, I, I meant to point out before, I think they usurped a lot of your authority. If you read that decision, something like reservation only, that really should be up to this board. Truck deliveries during non-operational hours, I don't know how you enforce that, but I think that should be up to this board. Deliveries should be coordinated with the deliveries by the post office. I mean, a lot of the conditions, again, I think it was a poor decision overall, but no tractor trailers, I mean, a lot of the conditions were to justify the lack of parking and I think this board really needs to take a hard look at how the planning board got to. All the planning board said was, there's off-street parking, that's it. I think the rest falls back on this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Bevelock, twenty-six Coleman. I, I served on the Conservation Commission for a few years, five years I believe. And I agree with John. Because of proximity of that building, it's within the buffer zone of the resource area, which is the Marmak River. They have a lot of jurisdiction over this property and I believe you should wait for their, hear what they have to say before you vote on it. Just to see if these plans are even viable, especially with what he wants to do outside. So, it was a good suggestion, I'd agree with it.
Thank you.
Right. Do we have any other questions or do we want to close out the public?
Unless anybody else has-
Can I ask just a complication on something you guys said?
Yeah.
You're saying that they approved ninety-two percent of the public parking for Groveland to this restaurant. Everyone else gets eighty percent?
Well, no.
Not really, so-
I don't think they're saying that they're allocating any parking to anybody. What they're saying is that at mass capacity, they're estimating the patrons of the proposed restaurant at full capacity would take, would absorb ninety-two percent of the parking available in and around the square. But, but again, that's-
It's not designated for them, they're just saying, according to the bylaw, they're allotted, for a restaurant use, you would have X amount of parking spaces for that restaurant. And so if you take that number and you figure out what's in the square, they're saying that if at full capacity, they would be, they might fill up ninety-two percent of the public parking that is available currently. Not that they would get ninety-two, but if it were at capacity, everyone was in there, it might fill up ninety-two percent of it. That's what they were saying, but not that they would get it, it was just-
I have to clarify that. The ninety-two percent is configured in within five hundred feet of the, of the three oh one Main Street. There's plenty of parking beyond the five hundred feet, but we had to confide, you know, we were confined to the five hundred foot setback from the restaurant. So, we had to follow the rules of the, of the planning board regulation that we had to have that. So, there were much more parking beyond the five hundred feet, so. But we have to adhere to the, the planning board rules, so.
Any other comments?
One more comment, sorry. As you know, the diner is not there right now.
Mm-hmm.
It's, something's going to go back in there. It's not quite known what yet. What happens to my parking for whatever business goes back in there? Yes, I've got to go through this, the whole process, I'm sure whoever is going to go in would have to go through the same process, but there's still other needs of parking in the square as well, so I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, there's additional needs than just what's there.
Can I ask you a question, one?
Sure.
So you were, you alluded that when the Groveland Diner was there before-
Yeah.
-they were utilizing other parking areas?
Right.
Do you, what, how, what was their arrangement? Because I, I, I mean, I've eaten at the Groveland Diner, but I didn't know there was arrangement for parking anywhere.
Yeah, so if you recall, where Applied Graphics is and where the dog area is, the parking lot that was across from that, the people who used to be there had an arrangement that they could use their parking lot during their hours. Also behind, I think it's, it's down in the back near Jerry's, behind that same building, there was an alleyway and they made some kind of a payment arrangement with them for certain hours that, you know, they put up a sign, additional parking through this alleyway. There was a sign right up there. So, if, you know, Saturdays and, Saturdays and Sunday mornings, when it was crazy, they couldn't find a, a place, and most people were trying to find a place as close to the location as they could. It was only one building down and through a, through an alleyway. So, and there was quite a bit of parking back there. So that's what there was.
Yeah, I never knew that, all the years I-
No, I didn't know, I didn't know that either, yeah. I was like, uh-
So. Any other questions? Not communicated very efficiently, I guess, but-
No, no.
They were paying for it either way.
Anyone else, last call?
Public.
Motion to close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, so what do you guys think?
One thing I do want to say is we can't dictate who gets to use the public parking, so there is-
Right.
If, any business in the square gets access to that parking as public parking, so we can't say that, you know, this business gets ninety-two percent, that business gets ten percent or any number. We can't say any business gets any parking, period. It's all public parking, so whoever gets that, first come, first served.
Exactly.
So whether that's this, you know, the post office or a new restaurant or the existing businesses, we have no control over who parks where in the public spaces. I do think it's going to be hard to enforce the employee-only in the, I, I think there's just a lot of issues in enforcement in the way the planning board rules are laid out. I just don't think those are enforceable. They do, planning board does have a stipulation that after one year, they do require them to present a parking study that they can review, but that was one of the key things that I thought.
Yeah, that's all that-
But I still think the biggest issue really is the ingress and egress from the site through that curb cut and the issues there and the clarity on that really is in Mass DOT's letter, where they explicitly stipulate that they were under the impression that the post office would go away and that any other use would require a further review because it was never part, it doesn't sound like it was ever part of the plan to continue using that space as is.
Which is why I believe the planning board put that in their decision that they would have to give it to the DOT.
Yeah.
Because they knew about this issue already.
And there is the email in your packet that's attached to that letter that states that they have received an application from the current-
Mm-hmm, that's under review.
-applicant and are in the process of reviewing it.
On the other hand, I do agree that it would be a good use of that space from a business perspective. It's just access and, I mean, most really smaller, you know, there's a lot of restaurants, when you consider the area, mostly larger areas like Haverhill and Newburyport, most restaurants don't have onsite parking, but, or at least not enough onsite parking. So I, I'm not that hung up on that particular issue of the public versus private parking area. It's more of a question of access and how the safety around that intersection, especially with an increase in traffic, foot traffic going in and out at all hours, you know, later in the night and stuff.
Well, and I agree, I'm, as, as far as I'm concerned with the pub, the parking issue, the public parking is not an issue. It's, it's the egress and ingress of, of that going on to the site with, with the waves laid out.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's no public parking near the site without having to cross other streets.
Right.
There is a stoplight which helps, but-
No stoplight, yeah, but-
We know how good stopwarks are at stopping people.
And there is a stoplight there.
Well, we're from Massachusetts, we don't wait for stoplights anyways, so.
But we're not the only town in the country that has this problem, right? All the whole town squares, they all have the same problem. None of them have parking.
Since they made the three lanes coming over the bridge, it's dangerous. I went to look in there the other night with my wife. I almost got creamed. I was coming over the bridge to take a left and it was a red light, so the people who went over the bridge were all stacked up. And if I stopped, I was going to get nailed. I looked in my rearview mirror and a guy was hustling to make the light and that would have been it. I had to keep going, you know, before I got hit. It's, my problem is, I mean, I think the restaurant is a wonderful idea, but we spent a lot of money to fix the square and now it seems that we're going to confuse the issue with traffic again and make it like, it used to be like a shootout at the O.K. Corral getting through there. And all the, millions of dollars were spent to try to straighten it out. And I think this is gonna make the problem worse. And I hate to say that, I'd love to see a restaurant in here, I really would. But that's my concern. Is getting in and out of there.
One other thing I would definitely want to see addressed would be, the restaurant is a good counter to the post office use, but the post office as a, you know, the, the post office there is not guaranteed. I'm surprised they're still there frankly, but... So that would be a concern, is about what use, you know, we'd have to put a stip, I definitely want a stipulation to say if the use of the site at all changed, we'd wanna revisit that, because we don't want... Unfortunately, the, without stipulating that the special permit for the restaurant is on the table, if that changes, they could put whatever they want in that post office, they could put a, they're zoning, there's no restrictions there at all. So it would only be a question of parking in terms of adding another small retail store there or something else, which would extend the hours and be more competitive with... I think, I think they could put a coffee shop there, cause that's under small retailers. If I remember the bylaws correctly.
A coffee shop, I think, would be under the restaurant.
I didn't bring my big book.
I don't remember the exact classification of which one.
I think, I think there's a stipulation, it's serving and not serving food within also, and...
Yeah. So, that would be another concern, cause it's hard to say what the life cycle, the lifespan of that post office is actually gonna be.
To be able to reach on its last legs anyways.
It's a small town.
Yeah.
It's nice to have a post office, but they're not exactly the strongest business in the, at the moment unfortunately. So I guess the question then would be, you know, what would we do to address those? Concerns other than denying it, obviously, but are there other, any other?
Yeah, too late.
Sorry. Are we, are we able to add stipulations to the, if we were to approve, add a stipulation to the approval for use as a restaurant based on some stipulations, or?
Unfortunately, I don't know if we can, I mean, we can definitely put stipulations on the restaurant in the permit. I don't know if we can put stipulations on the combination in the permit legally. I have absolutely no idea how, what the legal ramifications are on that side, but... In terms of use, you know, because the post office is grandfathered in and a legitimate reasonable use or non, whatever, a
Retail use.
Standard use of within the zone, so. We, I don't think we can put any stipulations on, hey, you can't use that if the restaurant is still there. Cause ideally, it would be ideal if the post office building was not there.
I mean, we'll waste someone.
Yeah. Like, everybody would be happier if the post office building was just a little bit further over the other side.
Just a little bit, mostly very.
But they have one there.
They do.
And Bauxford and Georgetown.
Bradford.
Havrell and... So if you can get the post office to move out, maybe golden. Not that I want the post office to move out or anything, so, I don't wanna get some email or something, but...
I, nothing else, to find people at the postal service, so...
So it's a tough one.
Well, I'm very conflicted for many reasons, but but one thing that's sort of standing out to me, and I, is that yes, I do believe that the ingress egress is a problem. However, I also am an American, right? It's like, why, if there's a, no, but I was, what I'm saying is that
You live in town, I don't know if you're in here.
It's a town, and if there's a restaurant that wants to open in, on their own property, basically, no. Or rent from a landlord, and what's, who's to say that we can have two other restaurants, but not one here either? Like, I feel like if we're not gonna do rest, so it's hard to say, like,
I agree.
how come one can open and run, and how come another one can open and run, but not, so I think, I'm struggling with that fact, like, how do you, I, the only reason is because of the, the issues with the site, but I feel like it's been looked at, at nauseam by the Planning Board. We can't change the Planning Board opinion. But, I don't know, I'm just saying I'm conflicted, I, I don't know where to go honestly. Those are my concerns.
Yeah, I also feel like the layout that was, the way it's laid out is not ideal.
No, no.
Like, there's so much more, but no matter what you do, you're gonna run into issues with conservation in terms of using the
Right, all that aside.
the non-paved land and then...
That's already part of the Planning Board decision, they have to go there anyway.
Well, no, but that's what I'm saying, is that the problem is, I feel like part of the problem is trying to squeeze everything into the existing footprint without really questioning what, how the site could best be used. So, what conservation could really do to help? What they could do from a conservation perspective to better use the land, rather than just trying to fit what the parking footprint looks like.
Any exterior alterations would adjust a grandfathered structure that's
No, I don't even mean the buildings, I mean the way the parking is laid out.
So impervious surface or impervious surface would also require them to look at that more detail?
So that would be the biggest question, cause the way that, the way the back of the post office is and the way the parking is on the side, there's, there's a lot of space there. It just can't be used based on the current footprint, so. That's it. What do we have?
Unconflicted.
Yes.
I mean, I, I think, I, I am to a point as well, but for me, I don't think enough to myself to progress it. Yeah, I think, I think most of my concerns from the previous application have, have been addressed. Like I said, for me, the issue of parking is not, is not, is not an issue. So that's, so that's not, not for me in consideration, so.
John?
John, any thoughts? Beyond what?
No, I said my piece, I, I I really don't wanna vote something up and down because of parking, because if we do, then just about anything that comes before us, we're gonna have to vote down on that, just on that precedent.
Well, well, like we said, I mean,
So...
free, free public parking is free for the, it could be
That doesn't bother me, I think...
You know, it could be over at the dry cleaner and no one else has, no one else has parking available in the square, right?
Yep, I get it, I get it.
Is there? Public, do we know if that public parking is overnight? Is there a stipulation in the the bylaws to say no overnight parking there, or?
I would have to think that some kind of ordinance that speaks to it, I would, I would think.
I don't think I've ever looked into that.
I don't know, but...
I don't think that we do have one, but I'm not certain. It wouldn't be an ordinance, or there would be a bylaw or some major regulatory...
Didn't bring my laptop, so I don't have the bylaws.
Well, I can't imagine it's really been a problem, so usually
No, that's what I'm saying, but there is a lot of
problems, like Groveland.
Well, there are residential units.
There is a lot of residential space where we've been adding recently in that area. Which would conflict, obviously, if the residential, if there was residential parking and business parking in that space.
And, and as far as, you know, some of the other concerns that were there, you know, as far as, you know, the deliveries, you know, I'm, I'm not concerned about, about the deliveries. Honestly, I have some pretty good experience with that in pulling a, a small truck and never delivers, which is not an issue. Obviously, a track, a fifty-feet tractor is not gonna fit, but anyone that owns and operates that's gonna know that anyways, so...
And the, the post office has the same issue, just the timing of deliveries and getting a truck, you know, a small truck in there is no worse than getting most SUVs in there.
Right.
I can't imagine they're gonna have a tractor-trailer truck delivering their food.
You'd be surprised. Cisco, all, they all have big trucks. And they ruin landscaping, just so you know for the future. They're terrible, they just pull up, they don't care. They'll park right in front of the post office, they don't care.
Obviously has opinion on that.
That's my biggest concern, it's gonna wreck the square as far as traffic. It's gonna be a problem.
For me, the biggest concern is the, the traffic at that intersection, and just how
It's horrible.
how to get in and out of that space. Particularly because, okay, you can say it's employee parking. I mean, it's not great with the post office, but it's hard to enforce, hey, this is employee only, without explicitly having some way of demarking it at the entrance. Cause if, if it's not marked at the entrance and blocked to some degree, people are gonna pull in there anyway, not, not a joke.
Even if you mark the spaces, they're gonna come in to see that.
Assuming that the business, the, the restaurant is doing well, which was hopeful, so, people are gonna try and park in there. Everybody wanna figure out a motion? Anybody familiar with the Mass DOT process on something like this? And what they're actually gonna look at?
What are they going to look at, being?
If we approve this, then they gotta go to Mass DOT and
Yeah, it's at Mass DOT already, so...
No, but they, well, they actually
Not with their revised plan. I don't think, so this letter is from May two thousand nineteen. This was the first go-around.
And then they submitted the plans after that, the plans that are before you today.
Right.
Who have been submitted to Mass DOT.
Right, that's what the email says.
But they haven't been reviewed.
But they're, they're in the process of review now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know what their process is and what they really look at to
Right, yeah, the Mass, the Mass DOT, that was from December nineteen, so...
So. I'm just not sure exactly what they cover versus what we would cover.
Their specific focus is going to be the curb cut, so it's gonna be site distances, it's gonna be angle, it's gonna be width, it's gonna be traffic flow, things of that nature. Like we had mentioned, the handicapper, anti-placement, the signage, the striping, whether or not there's gonna be any improvements within their jurisdiction that would require their infrastructure to be disturbed in any way, shape or form, and if so, what are they gonna be doing specifically, any of it to the standards of Mass DOT. So specifically, their focus, their area focus is going to be the curb cut and a curb cut only.
I think that's the major concern, so...
And then I think the
I also think access, once you're on the site, really won't be that bad, cause generally the loading area and the, the handing of parking is, gives a lot of space
Right.
that won't be used as a normal. So unfortunate that the post office would never show up for these.
To remind my liable postal workers.
Can't take their opinion into account if they don't show up, right?
Right. But, but that's also built into the Planning Board's, you know, contingencies as well.
Yeah.
That, that, they, you know... At least saying that they need a letter to confirm that there'll be no interference with operations. Alright, any, any, anything else?
I think we'd be looking at a special permit explicitly to run the restaurant. Probably, obviously stipulations around Mass DOT and COMCOM. I don't think we ex, I don't think we necessarily explicitly have to go through all of the planning
And, and we state their stipulations.
Yeah, unless there's something explicit, someone wants to call out to cover in ours too. Like if we wanna be included on the review or something like that.
Can, can that be a stipulation that we're included with the review, or?
I Again, I'm not a lawyer, so. From my opinion, we can, special permit, you can stipulate some things, but I don't know the exact boundaries.
Well, likewise.
In general, I'd make the condition that might not hold in a legal way, because it is a decision of the board, and the board has a certain comment, they'd like to make sure it's reiterated, and that's a strong way to do it, but again, like you've mentioned, whether or not it would hold in a court of law is a different issue.
So, so how would we word that? Just, just regarding the, the stipulation specifically?
Well, I guess that's the question, do we?
Do we, do we even need to?
Do we need to, or do we, is? Cause again, you know, I'm not that concerned about the parking for the restaurant specifically. I think the parking in that whole area needs to be addressed, but that's a general thing, that's not explicitly for this special permit.
Right, and like we said, planning adjustment, but with the traffic study.
Yeah, I mean, we've already done a lot of the parking stuff covered by planning, so I'm not necessarily inclined to rehash all of that.
I agree.
Any thoughts?
Any thoughts?
You just staying away? Or you just?
John, any other thoughts?
Dealing with the meds?
My biggest problem all along has been the curb cut. But the curb cut needs to be looked at by DOT. Cause the curb cut, now this is showing, I just wanted to double check the measurements. Now, this is showing, I just wanted to double check the measurements, so the curb cut is showing twenty-two feet for two lane traffic.
At that angle. The curb cut itself would actually be a little bit less.
Well.
Well, depending on where it actually is.
I believe is twenty-two feet.
Okay.
Because actually, John and I measured it.
We measured it.
Remember that?
Yeah.
It still seems awfully tight. Now, I don't know if.
So I'm not sure you need the angle, strictly speaking, but.
Well, I think you do, because the curb cut actually starts way over here. And the metal guardrail is right here, so you almost have to start over there.
Right, yeah.
Which is just bizarre, but. But I still don't like twenty-two feet. Now. I can't imagine, even if they, let's say they decided that they're going to expand the curb cut to, I don't know, twenty-six feet. Which would make it a safer proposition, but there's nowhere for it to go.
No.
Is the problem.
With the way the ramp, and the ramp is actually, they're moving it out of the lane of travel, but they're moving it forward too, so that would even further restrict how much space they have in front of the post office to use. The ramp is kind of taking up a lot of space there.
It makes that building even more non-conformant, so it could never be split, it could never, you know.
Is there a reason to leave, I don't know if you have any. Is there a reason to leave the ramp explicitly in the front of the building, given that the handicap parking space is moved more towards the back of the building? Why wouldn't the ramp run up the side of the building?
But even still, the handicap space is on space.
They can't get it, you know, be going in the side.
Well, I mean, the handicap space is way out of the way anyway, either way.
Right.
Whether it's there or whether it's here, it's not that, it's not ideal.
As of right now, there's no side entrance there anyways, there's only the loading area in the back.
Across the loading dock.
I don't know the specific size of that gap between the, what they've laid out as the lane of travel versus the corner of the building, but.
Right.
Where are you, what are you talking about?
Right here, just what this.
Yeah.
Space is. Doesn't look like quite enough, but. It's a tough space for that building right there.
All right. Any other discussion points you want to go through?
I am still conflicted. I, because as far as like a restaurant use in the square, I don't have a problem. However, I do have a problem with safely accessing the space and safely accessing the site. And the position of the handicap space really bothers me, because it's way over here, and if it's for postal, postal patrons, it makes it difficult for them to cross over two lanes of traffic, but I feel like also planning has already looked at all of that, the engineers and all of that, but from a common sense standpoint, which is where I try to view these things from, not necessarily an engineer's standpoint, because I'm not an engineer, but. I'm not opposed to a restaurant, but I am opposed to the safety of the site. Which is always, which really hasn't, I mean, I realize they reconfigured the parking, they kind of moved some things around and addressed some of the concerns that we had, but I think the biggest one all along has been this curb cut. It doesn't, it just doesn't make sense, and I'm I'm concerned about people walking on the site, which part of me says that's the landlord's problem, not mine, but it is from a town's perspective. We have to make sure our townspeople are safe, so.
Yeah, but then again, the curb cut is.
And I keep trying to think, is there a condition that I could work with that might make me feel better about it, but I I can't really find one, even if DOT. The only thing I was thinking is if DOT expanded the curb cut so that it was actually to a safe distance, the way it's positioned doesn't make any sense. So even if they added four feet to it, it's only going to add four feet in front of the post office, like, it doesn't make any sense. They can't go to the guardrail, they can't go into the intersection. It's just like, I just don't know how to make it work. I keep trying to figure out, is there a different way to make it work, and I.
Well, that's why I'm inclined to defer to mass DOT in terms of their assessment of the space.
Right, so but if DOT says it's fine, we're going to come back and just be like, oh, yeah, well, all of a sudden it's safe now? This is what, this is why I can't reconcile, like, right, if I could make a condition that mass DOT would make a decision that I would be favorable with, then may, it's, you see what I'm saying? Like, it's hard to.
I think we should move the course.
What's that?
I think we should move it up or down.
Yeah, I mean, we.
That's kind of where I'm getting at, too.
You what?
That I think we've kind of exhausted the discussion, and I think we need to put it up.
All right.
And I, you know, if we go, you know, if we follow the planning board's decision, the traffic on the site would not be affected by the restaurant, because that's employee parking only by their decision, so. Adding, you know, the use of the restaurant specifically does not impact, shouldn't really significantly impact the curb cut or the handicap parking. Although, strictly speaking, do you need to have the handicap parking for the restaurant?
Not if you're not providing public party for the restaurant.
But they're, I don't know, that's another area, legal area that I don't really.
Well, let me keep.
I mean, they have, well, they have to provide at least for the.
But, but.
Post office does, they would have to provide it for the employees, but I don't know if they provide it for the employees, then can they say, hey, the public can't use?
You know, for example, if you go to, if you go to a restaurant in Hable, then.
Hard thing to say.
You know, there's no, there's plenty of restaurants there without handicapped parking.
They also don't have employee parking with a handicap spot available.
That's what I'm saying, so there has to be a handicap space.
Is handicap parking on the lot, can they say the restaurant can't use the handicap parking, but the other business can and the employees can? I don't.
Well, I mean, I think the, the I think the intention of the handicap spot is for the post office, they could market, just like they market with the employee only spots, to say, you know, US postal customers only.
But they'd have to provide it for the employees. Because if they're going to provide any parking, they have to provide handicap parking. They can't say, hey, the employees can park here, but we don't have any handicap parking available. I'm fairly sure on that one. If they provide any parking for the, for the restaurant, they have to provide a handicap for the restaurant. So the, then I don't really have a problem with the if a handicap employee works in the restaurant, then parking there, but.
Right.
Regardless, there still needs to be one on the site, the post office.
Right.
Well, that's, that's based on handicap access rules and the number of parking spaces, not the businesses explicitly.
I, I guess that comes from.
For most uses.
Experience with the post office as a landlord, that they require a handicap parking.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, you are required to have handicap parking, yes, but that's what I'm saying, they can't. They have to have, based on the number of spaces, they have to have one, I don't know if it's explicitly required that it be used, maybe that's up to the post office, whether they explicitly require that it only can, it can be used for the post office and nobody else can use it, or, I don't, yeah, I'm not.
That's not even the issue. The issue is the position of the handicap parking space.
Yeah, well, that's another issue.
In where it's located in relation to the post office, that's my problem. So they have to have one, which, okay, there is one, but now you have to cross two lanes of traffic to get to it and get to the handicap ramp. That's my issue.
Yeah, we brought that up last time, that putting it over there was a long.
I still haven't resolved that in my brain, like, it doesn't, doesn't, it still doesn't work. You could draw it different, but it still doesn't work. That's my problem.
But planning was okay, was it?
Huh?
Said but planning was okay with it, though.
I know, that's why I'm struggling with, see, now you get my conflict.
I mean, by the letter of the law, they're obviously meeting the requirements for parking, I'm assuming.
Right, and again, you know, when we, when we say there'd be crossing over two lanes of traffic, that's not going to be.
Yeah, the only traffic should be.
Continuous traffic is going to be.
There's never going to be a point where someone's coming in and going out at the same time.
I mean, I mean, there obviously could be, but we, we, we had that problem getting out of any parking spot anywhere anyways.
Well, that's another problem, is right now, the parking is not well demarked or organized or anything, so getting in and out of there is, it might be, what is it, kind of a.
They're trying to stuff ten pounds of stuff for the five pound.
Nobody knows where to park right now. And it might be better with the lines drawn between the properties, but it's not. The property itself doesn't really organize parking at all well. Which is part of the way the property pavement is laid out and part of the fact that they don't have anything demarked now, so it would help that.
Yeah, right.
I think, I think the.
Right now, it's just chaotic.
Formalizing the parking would be better than what it is now.
Because right now, it's just chaotic, because nobody knows what to do. I get that, but.
No room to do anything.
Yeah, I still can't get over the curb cut at twenty-two feet, I just, that's, that's my sticking point. The restaurant use, I don't have a problem with the restaurant use. I'd love to go to a restaurant in Groveland, I'd love to spend money in Groveland, but there's no place to spend money in Groveland. I can't even buy cough drops in Groveland. I have to go to Hable or I have to go to, so there's very few restaurants here in Groveland. It would be nice to be able to walk to town and go to a restaurant, which would alleviate the parking, but it's the access that's the problem, that's been the problem, and it doesn't get any better. Unless DOT changes it, but there's no way for them to change it that makes it viable.
Would actually work.
Unless they decided to move that guardrail, but they're not going to do that, because the intersection's right there.
Plus, there's an incline there, too.
Right, so there's no where for it to go, even if they were going to expand.
Crosswalks and lights and everything.
This is my.
I think we should move the question.
I mean.
I don't know, but we're also not here to review the site plan, so it's really a question of the special permit and what do we approve the special permit with stipulations, or are we going to push back and say that the site in general is not appropriate for the use?
I don't know, what are you looking at me? There's two other people over there. I don't know, I, I'm.
No, I'm with you, I mean, I think we need to get down to the base of the, base of the request.
Safety is the, is my issue.
Well, it's.
Not the restaurant.
It's not just the safety of the patrons, it's the safety of everybody in town going through that square, and that's my problem.
This is my point, so.
That's my biggest problem.
So does somebody want to make a motion? Or which way are we leaning for a motion to begin with? Do we have an opinion on that? Explicitly.
I, I mean, I'm leaning towards making a motion to approve, then see if the, if it sticks.
So, let's make a motion to approve with the stipulations that mass DOT approves the site access and the curb cuts and how traffic flows through and around that intersection. I would say what we want to add, that the special permit does not significantly impact the other use of the site, so that basically means if the, another business goes into the post office space and there's a lot of comments or complaints, that then we have to revisit the special permit.
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not.
Planning board says they can look at it again in a year, based on some.
But we can't relook at a special permit for a use that we've already approved. We can't come back and say, oh, well, maybe not.
If the site changes, yes. We should be able to put a stipulation in there. No, but the site use, so.
Site use, yes.
If the site use changes, then this special permit would then be.
I think you could do that, considering that the use is, would be different than what you're approving.
Yes. That's what I'm hoping. I'm not saying we could approve it or deny it or whatever, I'm saying that.
Even if the site. So even, even if the site, so, so the use of the site for this building, we're not talking to the post office now, that building.
We're talking, the special permits for the post office, but we're addressing the hours of access for the site use and how it's used, which includes the post office. So part of if, well, assuming that we are going to include hours in our stipulations too, that's counter to the hours of the post office, so all of that is kind of included in the decision, in my opinion.
Maybe you should make a motion.
I was trying to do.
I'm just teasing you, go ahead.
I'm just not, not a lawyer, so.
So that the accessory use on the property, if it were to change.
And significantly, significantly negative, and it significantly impacts the the use, the, the, I don't know, the existing. I don't know how to word it, that's the problem.
It's nothing really impact.
I mean, I don't want to necessarily open it up if, you know, a flower business goes in there or something.
Right.
But if they open a convenience store, that would have a significant impact on the site.
That is a use that would be allowed by special permit, so you'd have to come before, so even.
Really?
So like just for.
Do we have anything in the business?
I just wanted to thank you guys, I appreciate the consideration, I know it's not public, but.
It's.
I think you're on track, that safety should be concerned, and it's up to the DOT, what they do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Your concern's safety, that's Groveland's concern.
So the convenience store would be something, small retail would be something that would come before, there's only board of appeals, special permit, well, no, excuse me, retail small is allowed by right.
The convenience was included, retail small, but it could be.
So, but convenience stores not, because that was the, the one that we had over at Salem Street with body.
That was industrial.
In the industrial zone, that's correct.
Right, but this is a business, though, so it's.
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't remember, and I didn't bring it.
Can you prepare that down with?
Apparently not.
I always bring it, but I couldn't.
All right, so, so stip says, so the stipulations of mass DOT approval, do we want to put COMCOM approval?
Yeah, I mean, all standard approvals are. Yeah, I mean, all the standard approvals are pretty much included in everything, special permit, so.
And then?
Well, you could do, like you had mentioned, too, that the hours of use of the accessory building does not conflict with the hours approved by the zoning board of appeals.
I mean, I think that would work, that the 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 hours of use do not significantly inflict or conflict. Do we want to explicitly, your opinions on, do we want to explicitly call out some of these stipulations in the planning board's decision, or do we want to defer to their decision?
No, I think that, that could be overkill.
So just defer to their their stipulations in their decision.
It could be a similar condition like they do in the planning board decision that says that this decision is null and void unless all of the conditions and or, um, uh, requirements of any of the boards, being the board of health, the conservation commission, the planning board are carried through as well.
I just want to make sure if anybody wants to call out anything explicitly.
That all other appropriate, appropriate, all of the conditions of appropriate boards are, are met and approved accordingly, so that's what I meant.
Yeah, because they cover a lot of the traffic and parking questions in that, so. And the use, you know, the hour, the hours and the employee-only parking for the rest, no catering parking for the restaurants.
All right, so we got
In terms of the seating, do we want to put a stipulation of a sixty-eight seat cap inclusive of all seating, or doesn't mean you can't have outdoor seating, it's just if you do, you, if you have the outdoor seating available, you have to close down some of the other seating?
No, because I think, I think fire is, is going to regulate that, right, because they're going to, they're going to
No, they're going to regulate the capacity, the building capacity. Not, they don't care, as long as they can, as long as it's safe to have that many people in the building.
Right.
They don't care about how many people are in the area. So, out, you know, mostly outdoor seating, parking, all that kind of stuff doesn't factor into their decision. So the, they're strictly looking at the the footprint of the building and egress and how easily you get people in and out.
If you also think about it, though, in any given restaurant, you're not going to have every bud and every seat, right? You're, you're going to have tables before where two people are at it, you're going to have tables of six with four people at it, that kind of thing. So it's, if it's capacity of, you know, sixty-eight plus, what do you say, twenty-four for the outside, I mean, realistically, you're never going to have every single of those seats filled, quite more than likely, right?
Well, no.
I mean, I know we need to
In reality, you would almost never have every single seat filled, but
Right, I mean good, well, we'll succeed and enough people will come to make it viable.
We may also be adding a lot more residential space, too, so, who knows, you know, maybe they get very busy. I'm just saying, if we, if we don't address it, then there is the possibility that outdoor seating would be added on in addition to it. Does anybody have issues with the outdoor seating being added on to the
I do not.
The proposed sixty-eight seats?
I, I do not.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. So how do you want to word it?
I don't know, but I, I, because I'm thinking sixty-eight plus twenty-four, that's going to get, it's already
Eighty-eight, so that's ninety-two, is what we're talking. Again, so say relative, say relatively, you say, on a quote-unquote good night, again, I'm no restaurant expert by any stretch, but say you're at eighty-five percent capacity of the total seats, right? Just, just because of the way parties come in, that they're not going to, it's not going to equal the way you have it laid out every time, right? So, what's eighty-five percent of ninety, I'm not a math guy.
I don't think your estimates are that accurate, that it really matters, if you can tell.
Right, right, so say you're right, so say we're in, so say we're in the high seventies-ish.
I think they would be by default, too, regulated under the fact that the parking reduction only covers the sixty-eight seats, it does not cover the additional seats in its entirety, so
I mean, but we could call that out explicitly in the special permit.
Exactly, that'd be sixty-eight seats.
Sixty-eight seats, you know, into either, you know, if you add seats outside, then you just basically say those seats aren't available inside at that time. Not that you can't use inside and outside seating, you just can't seat more than sixty-eight people at a time.
Well, because of the, the parking issue, so the parking at sixty-eight is at ninety-two percent of the public parking, which is the big concern, right?
I mean, it was.
So, but if you're at twenty, if you add twenty-four, now you're over a hundred percent of the public parking. And that's a problem for everyone.
I mean, yes, but, but, but again, their patrons, and patrons of anyone in the square are all going to have to decide, okay, is it worth it for me to park way down here, wherever down here is, to go to this facility? Or am I going to go to Wendy's?
One other question.
Burger King's right over the corner.
Burger King's right over the corner, right?
Liquor license or any of that, do you have any thoughts, or?
That'd be another approval under the board of selectmen. So conservation, board of selectmen, mass DOT, post office agreement, that's still a lot of hurdles.
Yeah, that one's going to be tough, but it would also impact, that would impact my decision on the number of seats, because liquor being served just increases the
Yeah.
More, more people and more liquor. So, a hundred versus sixty people for a
In my, my personal opinion, but, you know, is sixty-eight seems like it's already pushing it, so to add twenty-four more is, like
I'm fine adding a stipulation that we limit it to sixty-eight seats, period. With no stipulation of where those seats are, or how they're organized, or any of that. I'm not sure you're going to really, in a reasonable space, be able to accommodate much more than that anyway, but we, that's something I feel like could be explicitly called out in the special permit, without
Oh, yeah, you could definitely do that, I just
Yeah, I mean, like I said, for me, that's not necessarily an issue, but, you know, if the majority of the board would like the stipulation, I'm certainly okay with it.
Yeah, and that's really, from as far as I can tell, that's what was in anyway, so I don't, I'd be inclined to include it.
So we're including stipulation for sixty-eight seats?
Yes.
No more than
No more than sixty-eight.
Yeah.
I mean, because that's what all their their numbers are based on, and that's I think that covers all the stuff I've, can think of, I've thought of.
All right, so we got, for stipulations, be that's approval of mass DOT, concom, and all, and all other stipulations of town and state boards are, are approved accordingly. The hours of use for the accessory building does not conflict with the hours, not conflict with the board's approval.
I would put it not significantly conflict, because, like, if there's
Yeah.
A few hours here or there, like there was with the post office, it's not that big of a deal, because those aren't even there, nobody's going to be going. Not many people are going to be going to dinner at three o'clock anyway, but if it's, you know, if they open up, again, if they open up something, you know, in there that does, you know, runs until ten P M., then that would be a significant
Okay, so, the hours of use for the accessory building does not significantly conflict with the board's approval in that no more than sixty-eight patrons are served at the establishment at one time. That's something, we covered everything? Kathy, anything else you want to have, have mentioned?
No.
All right.
Thanks.
All right. I will, I'll make a motion to approve application twenty twenty dash one at three oh one Main Street, granting a special permit to utilize the site as a restaurant with the following stipulations. That mass DOT approval, concom approval, and all of the town and state board approvals, stipulations are approved accordingly. That the hours of use for the accessory building does not significantly conflict with the board's approval. And that no more than sixty-eight patrons are served at the establishment at one time.
You might want to reference the hours, we should probably include the hours, since we're calling those out that are in
Did you reference the planning board decision?
You did reference the decision.
I, I, I said all, all other town and state boards.
But not in that specific stipulation.
Specifically referenced the planning board decision dated
Just add this to the
Whatever the date was.
That hours, just add that. It's one sentence, so.
It's like January seventh, twenty twenty?
Take two.
I, I, I'm still conflicted, this is why I'm, I'm
Well, you got a few more minutes, think about it.
Yeah, I get to
Think it over.
Because I, because none of this addresses my safety problem. This is where I'm stuck.
I'm specifically on the curb cut, I'm deferring to the experts on that one. I'm not going to say either way. Whether or not it's safe. I assume mass DOT, that's what they're, the assumption is that that's what they're looking at. It's rough, but I'm not sure it's explicitly a issue with traffic. I also don't think that the special permit, the way it is set up, significantly impacts the safety of it, the safety of issue is there.
Well, my
So, I also have that going, that, that's kind of an add-on, but mostly, if mass DOT sees an issue with the safety, it's not going to go through anyway.
Right.
What if they don't address it? And it goes through as is? And something happens there, this is my concern.
Well, and that's, that's why I'm saying, I don't think adding, I don't think the special permit for the restaurant has an impact on that. If something's going to happen, it's going to happen with the post office. I don't think the parking use by employees of the, I would actually not have an issue with that being a safety issue if it was explicitly, if the whole parking lot was just parking for employees of the restaurant. That's, that's kind of why
Yeah, to be honest, it's kind of, it's kind of the post office customers I'm worried about, so.
Right. And I'm not sure the post office is going to be
That's why I'm not really saying that, you know, well
Well, that, I mean, the post office
It's something we need to consider, I, from my opinion, though, it's not this bus, this use that's the problem, it's the post office use that's the problem.
Just pull those post office, and we're all good.
So mass DOT would decide the curb cut.
Take two.
Did we get that? Did we change, did we actually, did you say the whole thing?
Well, I, I, I don't, I need to go through the whole thing again, because we're adding the
Oh, the man, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Want to try again?
I will make a motion to approve the application twenty twenty dash one at three oh one Main Street, granting a special permit to utilize the site as a restaurant with the following stipulations. That mass DOT approval, concom approval, and all other stipulations and approvals from all other town and state boards are approved accordingly. That the hours of use for the accessory building does not significantly conflict with the board's approval, specifically as laid out in the January seventh, twenty twenty planning board approval. And that there are no more than sixty-eight patrons are served at the restaurant establishment at one time.
I will second it, unless somebody else has that. I will second that.
Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The tie?
More than a tie, we need a hundred percent.
Four votes, uh
It's all or nothing, I'm, poor person board, unfortunately.
So the, so the motion has not passed?
No.
Having said that, I would welcome anybody to town, I hope you come to town. I'd love to see a restaurant in town. I mean that.
Thank you.
Maybe a spot across the street available.
Yeah.
But it's ideal for a restaurant.
No. You know what's going to have to happen?
I, I feel like this site has so much potential, but does, does some more investment needed there to get it there, that's the problem.
Thank, thank you, thank you both.
There's a few things that they need to figure out. All right. It's longer than I expected, but see, this out, put a handicap parking space here, put a ramp here.
How many people ask to go to the post office?
How hard is that? Just fill this in. See?
Yeah, I know.
Fill this, put a handicap parking place here, fill this in.
Mm-hmm.
Put a ramp here.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have access close to the parking. Not, you have a lot more space.
What? We need to get the minutes and invoice quickly, and then we can do this after.
Yeah. All right. Kathy, did you review the minutes?
I reviewed them. No changes, I thought they were fantastic, and
I would like to make a motion to approve the Wednesday, February fifth, two thousand twenty minutes. As is.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have the T E C invoice, right?
Yes.
And there's just the one invoice from T E C for application two thousand nineteen dash three.
Any concerns, any thoughts?
I missed it, so.
There are sufficient funds.
I don't remember what we, we paid them some, but I'm assuming
The applicant has took money in account for this already.
Yeah, the reservation funds.
We have sufficient funds for both the civil traffic, traffic and architectural review.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve invoice number one six three eight eight T E C from T E C dated January thirty first, twenty twenty.
Seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion? Um, anything in regards to what we're doing Thursday? That we have a commentary?
Well, we're waiting for comments from T E C.
We're waiting for
She should have final comments, Amy will be provided with the documentation that she has requested, she will take a look at that information. I will also make sure the T E C has the waiver list, they will take a look at that and make any comments to that prior to the meeting, and I don't believe there's any other outstanding items, but I will certainly make sure that they're all addressed prior to that Thursday.
Thank you.
And, and Amy's expecting to have some closure, closure, closure on her concerns by then?
I'm sorry?
And Amy, the attorney, she's expecting to have closure on her concerns by then, too?
Um, she was delivered the plan that she had requested today, I believe. But then I know that there's still some outstanding issues, but I do know that the attorney for the applicant, Jay Callman, did reach out to her directly, so they are in communication and having a conversation right now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Ten oh two?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Alright.